Call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 8th, 2015 together. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Amon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Eight present, zero absent.
Come on, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of ferocious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? I would like to delete the snow and ice hearing for this evening, that public hearing. The individual that we had on came in and paid their bill today. And I'd like to add council committee meetings. And that will be added at the end of the agenda. With that, look for a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for the consent items. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification on the city council minutes. Page five to six, there's obviously something missing. It doesn't read... Page six starts in the middle of a sentence. Page five ends with a complete sentence. They just let us know what it was, or...
Yes, Kevin will have that sent out in the weekly.
Friday memo.
Friday memo. Is that okay?
Okay.
And we'll have to adjust the minutes as well. We'll probably have to bring those back then, right?
Let's just not approve them.
Okay. We'll pull those.
Pull them out.
Does that affect anything, though? Because we set the hearings for tonight. Robert, does that affect anything if we don't?
Mayor, councilmembers, I don't think that affects anything. You still took action and you're still acting pursuant to it. You will eventually approve the official record of that.
Okay. Okay, all those... I'm sorry.
Does that require a motion to not approve that?
I believe not. I believe we pull those from the consent items.
Okay.
And just leave them there.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that we had 224 pages in our packet tonight, so if there's a mistake somewhere, I'm sure somebody... We all didn't catch it.
Anything else? Okay, so with the exception of B, city council minutes of August 17th, all those in favor of the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. Next, we have the scheduled hearing for assessment of unpaid weed and grass mowing. Mr. Halliday.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, throughout the course of the summer, from the period of August 1, 2014, through July 31, 2015, the city or its agents have mowed a variety of properties that have been out of compliance with our ordinance. They were notified, we had to do the mowing, they were billed, and the bills and invoices were not paid. Tonight, we have a hearing for any of those listed property owners to make a comment of why they should not be. Assess that against their property for collection in 2016. And we open the hearing to hear that and subsequent to any testimony. It is staff's recommendation we adopt a resolution certifying these amounts as listed by their property parcel and property address, certify them for collection of the county auditor for tax year 2016.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing and bring it before the council. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve as the recommendation of staff. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Amon.
One question, Kevin. As far as the... This is related to a lot of them on all... The first three on all the unpaid weed and grass mowing, unpaid snow and ice, and the unpaid garbage service. Do we have a frequency in the same properties having to be notified of this? Is there any assumption of what you might have in response to that?
Councilman Amon, members of the council, we have a frequency in the same summer year because of changing ownership, banks taking it back, and things let go. But generally, it is not from year to year to year. Once that foreclosure is settled, resold, any kind of combination of things, the new owner takes care of the property.
My interest in that, of course, is whether or not we have people consistently violating it. And I think this may be related to maybe some of the other services, too, in the same question, in the same manner. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next, we have special assessments for unpaid garbage removal. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have listed before you one property that was problematic for our planning and zoning department. They've been properly notified that they had garbage and a matter to be cleaned up. They did not take care of those arrangements, so the city had to make arrangements to have the garbage removed. The bill was then sent that covered the cost of the service. No payment was made. Tonight's hearing, after notifying this individual, there's only one, is to take testimony and subsequent to that testimony, adopt a resolution certifying this for collection in 2016.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Hearing done, bring it to the council.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the assessments for the unpaid garbage removal. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next, we have a sale of land to Wilmer Poultry Company, and for that, we have Bruce Peterson, planning and development director.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the public hearing tonight is the last step in the process to transfer title in the property from the city of Wilmer to Wilmer Poultry Company. The property is 5.45 acres in the southeast quarter of Section 23 of St. John's Township. The adoption of the ordinance authorizing the sale of land is the next step. Preliminary approval was given at the council meeting when the ordinance was introduced. It would be the recommendation of staff that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published. I should add that I'm in possession of a certified check for the full appraised value of the property and would expect, if the council approves the transfer, to execute the deed and provide that to the buyer tomorrow.
Okay. Is there any comments from the public? Hearing seen none, bring it to the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sale of land, recommend that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published. Seen none, roll call.
Councilmember Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The motion passes. Next, we have the sale of land to Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, again, this is the final step in that process. The proposal is that a lot in Pleasant View 4th Edition be transferred to Habitat for Humanity for the sum of $1. I have in my possession in the office an executed waiver of special assessments and the hearing in the amount of just over $9,600 that they have agreed to pay and which would be assessed against the property if this ordinance is adopted by the council. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance authorizing the sale of land to Habitat for Humanity of West Central Minnesota be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Is there any comments from the public? Seen and hearing none to the council.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sale of land to Habitat for Humanity for $1. Adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it. Discussion. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, have we done this before for Habitat?
No. To the best of my knowledge, the city has not been involved directly financially with a Habitat project in the past.
How about... I know we did this school quite a while ago, the senior high school, then we do that for... Was that for a buck, too?
I believe so. That was a long time ago, but I believe it was, yes.
Are there any other entities that come to us for this same type of thing, wanting a piece of property for a dollar, whereas Habitat, pretty much it?
I have not had similar requests in the past, so I don't think it's a common thing. It's very common for municipalities to be involved with Habitat. There's a history across the state of municipalities transferring properties to Habitat for a dollar.
If a contractor came to the city and asked to buy a piece of property for a buck, would we do the same or not?
That would be a policy decision for the council to make.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're selling it for a dollar, but this land was given to the city.
That is correct.
And they're assuming the assessments of $9,622 or something.
That is correct.
Otherwise, the city would have to pay that assessment over time if it's not sold.
Well, that's correct. The city's still responsible for that portion of the bond payments related to that property, certainly.
And then we'll get this property on the tax roll and start paying property tax, so...
That's the goal.
That's right.
Additional discussion. Councilmember Amon, sorry.
The indebtedness with the bond and the last... I believe that street's been in for about, what, two, three years? Have we paid those indebtednesses proportionately? Is that included in the price of the total assessments that they're going to be paying?
Well, the city has made its bond payments annually since then, so you could argue that the assessments for that property have been paid on an annual basis, but they will be fully reassessed at the original amount and the original interest rate for a 10-year period. So the city will collect all its money back with interest.
So we don't have the number as far as how much indebtedness we... proportionally we have had per lot currently since we started the project until now?
You know, it wouldn't be hard to get that information. I could pull it off an assessment card, but I don't have it with me.
Okay. Any estimate of what the total street costs?
Well, geez, you know, it... Less than half of the assessments for this lot have been collected to date, I'm sure, or have been paid just because the street's not that old, so...
So the other lots would be proportionally maybe $10,000, $12,000 were the assessments?
Well, they're all going to carry pretty much the same level of assessments, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to make a correction there, Kevin, at all? Oh, okay. That answer your question, Councilmember Amon?
Thank you.
Anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next, we have the mayoral appointments of the charter commission. We need to pull this off the table. Needs to be a motion in second to take it off the table.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to remove the mayoral appointments that were tabled at our last meeting. The mayoral appointments are Brad Hansen, Brad Hansen, Todd Engel, Robert Bonowitz, and Kelly Welch. And as the document states, the names will be forwarded to the city attorney and then petitioned to the district court for the names. So Kevin, did you want to add anything to that?
Mr. Mayor, just to be legal, I'm just quickly checking. You didn't call for a vote on that. Is that acceptable?
Motion... I'm sorry?
Need a vote to take it off the table.
I'm sorry. Okay. We need a... There's a motion on the table to take it out. I'm sorry.
It needs a vote.
There's a motion on the table to remove the mayoral appointments from the table. I'm sorry, yes, I missed that step. Discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a few calls today from people that were wondering how they can be appointed. So we... I think we need a better system on letting the people know what commissions, what group needs members. I know there's a policy out there that we were supposed to know one meeting, and then we would vote on it at the next meeting two weeks later. Now, we got two new members here that just came up, Mr. Welsh and Bonowitz, and I have no problems with either one. But I see here that first two, they're from the second ward. The last two are from the third ward. Previous mayors always would let us know when a vacancy occurred, if a member from your ward left, and they would ask the representative from that ward or both representatives if they could find someone. So it's balanced out, and I'd like that procedure to continue?
I have no problem with that. The appoint... Or the openings were announced... These were openings that have been there since 2014. And it was announced back then when the openings occurred. There were no names that were brought forward. When I assumed the position of mayor, I was told of the open positions that was sent out, and I told council that if they have recommendations to bring those to me, it's been on the city's website, the open positions. At this point, there's openings on the Human Rights Commission and on the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's where the two openings still remain. There are openings on those boards. Otherwise, the rest of the boards and commissions are full. On the issue of having it come to one council meeting, held over, and then approved at the next council meeting, I don't remember that, and I guess I was just going by what direction I was given from staff, that we have it on the agenda and we move it forward. In my recollection from before, there would be names that were submitted that day, and they'd be approved that night at the same council meeting in the past. So I think we're following, you know, the notice, but Kevin, can... Do you know procedurally?
Well, procedurally, sir, we're in the middle of a motion just to take something off the table, so we're leaving proper procedure just on this motion. But the bottom line of the history was that request was made long ago, and then after a series of appointments came to the meeting, not really anticipated to be acted on, the council would act on them. They had no concern with the name, and they'd take immediate action. So I think it evolved into not doing that process that was once discussed. So Mr. Fagerly is right. There was a history there a handful of years ago.
So I think we need clarification and more discussion on it. So I'm going to make a motion to table this again.
Second. Motion made and seconded to table. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? What did you have, Kevin?
Well, I have 6-1. Is there only?
5-2.
5-2? Okay, I didn't hear that, but very strong. So the motion to table again is...
So I need to understand the process here. And I haven't done it right since I've been mayor then, is what you're telling me today.
Mr. Mayor, the history of the last two or three years shows that the council would get the document that evening and had no concerns and would approve the application, the appointments. So you've been following the process at least for two or three years, before you took office. Many years ago, that concern was voiced, that we should get the biographies, and that's when it started. There was a more... We have a very detailed form now that the council could look at that. So technically, it should probably be put on... Written differently where it would say, "No action taken tonight." But the council would have to resist that, too, and not jump in and just then approve that person, because that's kind of what it morphed into.
Okay. Well, I was not aware of that, and certainly on all the other appointments that I've done, I've done it this way. So I guess we'll follow the procedure. Staff should make sure and remind the mayor of the process. Councilmember Nelson.
Is it appropriate to ask a question? I was going to ask earlier, and I realized it wasn't about tabling the motion, though, so...
If there's a motion to table, we can have discussion on...
No, I know that. But is it okay if I ask a question about this procedure?
Sure.
It might be helpful for us to review what the procedure should be, and I don't disagree with what Councilmember Fagerly said. However, do we also look at the makeup of the group and that you're going to appoint to, to see that there's some sort of balance for members in the community and those types of things in your decision? Isn't it your appointment? Aren't the... I mean, I think maybe we need to review what we're doing versus just table things.
Right. I think one of the things is that, I mean... I mean, the charter is very clear that the mayor is supposed to make the appointments. And traditionally, that has not been questioned. I know that it was questioned a number of years ago, which caused a great concern on an appointment to the... To the EDC. That was done, but then at the end, that came back, and it did go back to the EDC, and that person was appointed, I believe, at the next meeting. I mean, we're setting a precedent here, of course, of not following the charter, but I mean, if we have a procedure for it, that's what we have procedures for. Might be something to bring to the Charter Commission to get clarification.
May we ask the city attorney to comment on this?
Certainly.
About tabling it?
Well, it's tabled now, you can't...
No, I know. About the procedure, we've tabled it twice.
Right. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I guess Councilmember Nelson, I would need a little clarification on what the question is at the moment.
We don't have a procedure in place, and so we can... We could continue to table this every time we meet. So is it proper to table mayoral appointment when there isn't a written procedure in place?
There's nothing that would prevent the council from tabling it. Obviously, the procedure the council wants to follow for making a recommendation to appoint someone to the Charter Commission is a matter for the council to decide itself. The only comment I'd make, I guess, to inform the discussion a little more, is making appointments to the Charter Commission is a little different animal than most of the appointments that come before the council as proposed by the mayor. That's because you're not operating under the charter. You're operating under state statute.
Right.
And state statute ultimately gives the appointing authority to the district court chief judge. What we're doing here... The statute also says that the several parties may suggest names to the chief judge, the council being one of them. So it's the council that has the authority as a whole to make a suggestion to the chief judge, and that's really what you're considering, not a direct appointment by the mayor.
Just one more clarification. If I understand correctly from serving on there, the Charter Commission could make the...
That's correct.
Bring forward the names to the judge, and the judge could appoint from them without any council action, correct?
Right. That's true, yeah. The only procedure in the statute is that the council, as well as the Charter Commission, may suggest names to the chief judge. In the past, there's been instances where both the commission and the council have made suggestions, and they've suggested different names, in which case it falls to the chief judge to just make the decision.
Thank you.
Maybe what we need to do here is just have the people apply directly to the Charter Commission and have the Charter Commission... Then we don't have to have the tabling of the appointments, and we can do that as well. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe what the council's been looking for for a while is any appointments, whether it's a Charter Commissioner or Rice Hospital Board or the MUC, is prior knowledge of the persons that are going to be appointed before they're put on the agenda. So if there's any concerns at all, we can call and discuss it with you. I believe that we've been talking about that for a while, and we just... I think we assumed that that would be happening, and I know you knew about it, but...
Yeah, you talked to me about it last week.
Yeah. So that's what I think we're after, just before something's put on agenda, just like our committees, the agenda is presently sent to the committee chair before it's published. Do you have anything to add? Do you have anything to strike from it? Then send it back, then publish it after it's been approved by the chair. We were just asking for the same thing for any appointments, to send them to us email before they're published on the agenda and made public, in case there's any concern. That was it.
Mr. Mayor? Well, the... I'm going to answer the question... What Councilmember Christians said. You've had Brad Hansen's name and Todd Ingalls. I haven't received any calls. I talked to the city interim administrator. He didn't receive no calls. They've been here for two meetings, followed the procedure that's been outlined tonight. I mean, you could have motioned those two to go forward, tabled the other two, be consistent. Yeah, you did talk to me about this last week, but the question I have is if we make the names known to the council, the full council, that's the whole body, is that a violation of the open meeting law? So you're asking for approval, preapproval, pre-information before it goes out. Can we do that? Can we build consensus before we come to a formal process?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that, I guess, would all be determined by how that takes place. I don't think you can build consensus outside of a properly noticed meeting, but as far as just distributing information, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
And probably the preferred way to do that would be through your city administrator, work through your city administrator, that you have an appointment coming up at a future meeting, and you want the council to be aware of it and ask the administrator to distribute that information.
Okay. Councilmember Amon?
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to recommend... It sounds to me like when you make a policy decision, let's write it down, get it in writing, and get it approved by the appropriate committee, and then everybody has a copy of the same guidelines. We should be revisiting that.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson?
You know, this has been bothering me, and this is troublesome. I can remember within the last four years, probably, a couple of instances where we have had appointments or non-appointments come to the council, and I had some questions about it, about the individuals. I'm not going to talk about who they were, but there were two of them. And I was chastised by the council for questioning the mayor. And the crux of it was, if we have people that are willing to serve, then who are we to say no? And that happened to me twice. So I think that the charter states that the mayor makes the appointments, and the word that I... And the feeling that I got from the discussions that I had was, once the mayor makes the recommendation, it's up to us to approve it. And I think that I might be the only one that had ever had a question or an issue with anyone, and like I say, I was chastised severely for questioning that.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
I'm not opposed to having a procedure, but I guess I'm not quite sure what the procedure is that we're looking at. If it's... We don't like someone, or if we don't... What? I don't know what's going to be the criteria that we develop as to how we're going to look at it and pass judgment on it for two weeks. Who are we going to call? Do we... Are we infringing on people's rights here? Are we infringing on who they are and who they associate with? I think we need to be careful with what we're doing. I think it's a mayoral appointment, and people in this community have the right to apply.
Yeah, it is concerning to me as well. I mean, when you have people... I mean, when you have people, it's not like these people resigned last week, or three weeks ago, I should say, at this point. You know, and again, I'll just say that if there were concerns, I mean, I certainly would think that the people that were concerned would have brought that forward. Maybe now, in the next two weeks, they might, I don't know. Councilmember Aman.
Just clarification, I think Robert Scott's looking up the city charter right now. I believe the mayor appoints, the mayor appoints people with the approval of the city councils where the charter reached right now, correct?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Aman, that's correct for appointments to commissions that are established by the charter, such as your hospital board, your utilities commission. So I guess it's important for the council to understand, when you're talking about appointments, the procedure is different depending on the appointment. The Charter Commission's different than it would be to appoint to the utilities commission, for example.
Yeah, and one of the things, I had a citizen in the community send me an email about questioning my appointments after last council meeting, and I had shared with them what I just said here, is maybe we should just have the people apply directly to the district court, and don't even come through the council. I mean, that clearly is allowed under state statute. It's allowed, I mean, that's how other cities do it. We certainly could do that.
Yeah, you could. I mean, the council is one of the bodies authorized by state statute to make recommendations to the chief judge, so.
Mm-hmm.
The council wants to relinquish that power, such as it is, it could do that, and just kind of take itself out of the process, but it's possible the council also wants to have that input, or that ability to identify candidates and suggest them to the chief judge. So it's really, again, this is a policy decision, what does the council, how does it want to handle making those recommendations, or not?
Certainly, certainly. Now, open forum. First, we have Jessica Roloff's.
Good evening, Mayor Calvin, councilmembers. The League of Women Voters of Wilmer wishes to address a serious matter facing the citizens of Ward Two. Councilmember Christensen, during the August 17th council meeting, referred to a group of his constituents as a special interest group. Particularly, he stated he will no longer take direction from any constituent who signed the recall petition. This would leave approximately 900 constituents effectively without one of their elected representatives. To refuse representation to these constituents based upon their involvement in a legal course of redress of their concerns is a clear violation of the oath of office, which each council member takes when entering their position. To disenfranchise all people who campaign or seek redress against you is no more than political retribution, and is a clear violation of their rights under the Constitution of the United States, which provides equal protection for all citizens under the law.
Jessica, I'm going to stop you just for a minute, because I don't believe Kevin started the timer.
I promise, it's like 2:30. I respect your rules.
I'm sorry, I.
That's all right.
Called out on this before, and I said, next time I seen that happen, I would stop the conversation, so I apologize. Hey, go ahead, three minutes or two. What do you want?
All right. To disenfranchise all people who campaign or seek redress against you is no more than political retribution, and is a clear violation of their rights under the Constitution of the United States, which provides equal protection for all citizens under the law. The Wilmer City Charter states the following oath. I do solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States, and of the state of Minnesota, and the Wilmer City Charter, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of the city of Wilmer to the best of my judgment and ability. Undoubtedly, the burden of leadership is heavier during contentious times, but it is a burden each elected official accepts when they take the oath of office. There is a divide in this community. Who caused it and when it started matters less than how it is going to be repaired. We would respectfully ask Councilmember Christensen to rescind his previous comments and recommit to the oath of office. It is not only the law, but it is the right and practical thing to do. We are, after all, in this together. Like it or not, we depend on and are linked to each other. The citizens of Ward Two who signed the petition can no more decide to withhold payment of taxes or assessments based upon their dissatisfaction, any more than their elected representative can refuse to represent them. Again, the burden of healing this divide lies most heavily with those in leadership, especially elected officials. We would ask you to take the first step, Councilmember Christensen, and recommit to your duties and to represent all the people of your ward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue Quest.
Sue Quest, 1451 Hanson Drive, southwest, Wilmer.
Just a minute.
You got your three minutes? I timed it at home, I think I've got 40 seconds to go. But anyway, and I even talked slow bit of time. Okay, beginning, right now. Mayor Calvin, at the last city council meeting, you appeared offended that you were called out for your close association with an unelected outside group that has and is undermining our city government. Moving Wilmer Forward, which was renamed Recall Ron, committed its unscrupulous antics to remove a seasoned and honorable councilperson, stopped the council's nomination of a qualified citizen to one of our boards, and threatened to be more vocal if the city council filled a vacant seat with an appointment versus a special election. The collateral damage has not been fully assessed yet. What we know is their loud and orchestrated false allegations caused divisiveness and tarnished our city. I, too, would not want my name linked up with these groups. Sadly, Mayor Calvin, your name does. August of 2014, you wrote a letter to the editor supporting Move the City Forward and criticizing the majority of council. At the candidate forum, I shared that I couldn't vote for you because you, because of your bias. And you flippantly replied, "Everybody comes to an office with a bias." Our first president, George Washington, is credited in saying, "Associate yourself with people of good quality if you esteem your own reputation, for it is better to be alone than in bad company." Your association with this malicious group unfolds with time. Your campaign manager, Kathy Schwantus, chamber director, Ken Warner, defeated councilman Steve Gardner, and councilman Dennis Anderson lobbied against a competent nominee for the EDC operating board with slander. According to attorney Scott, you, former city administrator Charlene Stevens, and her attorney were the only ones who knew of her voluntary separation agreement. However, your campaign manager, Kathy Schwantus, emailed the group of this upcoming event, which the West Central Tribune reported on. At the alleged town hall meeting, your campaign manager Kathy Schwantus reserved the rack eight video camera. Kathy Schwantus, like many of the Moving Wilmer Forward members, was also an active participant of Recall Ron. At the last city council meeting, you nominated Todd Engel and Brad Hanson to the Charter Commission. Engel is one of the leaders of Recall Ron, and he and Hanson signed the petition. Your own words and associations have caused citizens to not trust or respect you, and refer to you as one of the good old boys. Thank you.
The only thing I'll say to that, Sue, is that you can say what you choose to say, what you're saying is not true.
Well.
I am not part of Recall Ron, I was not part of Moving Wilmer Forward, and, you know, you have the ability to say what you want to say, we're giving you your three minutes, but I will not, you know, you can draw analogies how you choose, but I am not part, I was not part of Recall Ron. And again, like I stated already today, they have the right to do that. It's in our charter. It's part of our constitution for our city. Moving Wilmer Forward, I had a question on how many people were part of my campaign that were part of Moving Wilmer Forward, and also Recall Ron, and I answered those questions to the person who asked me the questions. I appreciate your comments, thank you.
If I could just make one more comment in reply to that. The previous speaker talks about the constitutional rights of everybody. You know what? My heart goes out to the elderly people that were in the nursing home in my ward, and vulnerable adults who were in a group home that were asked to sign that petition. And when the 50-year-old woman, her mother came to her and says, "I told you not to sign anything," they support Ron Christensen. That 50-year-old woman was bawling her head off, and there are so many people that are really hurt by the garbage that has been done here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Finance Committee report, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on the, when was that, August 31st? It was a finance committee with the full council participation, because we were going to discuss the 2016 mayor's proposed budget. There were no public comments. And then, moving into the mayor's 2016 budget, Mayor Marvin Calvin presented his proposed 2016 budget totaling $34,745,568. Of the total budget, $14,433,983 is for general operating, $7,688,007 is for capital improvements, $1,054,260 is for special revenue internal services, $2,404,267 is for debt service, and $9,165,051 is for waste treatment plant. It was noted that the general portion of the budget includes $2,987,000 in transfers, bringing the total to $16,443,770. A total proposed tax levy of $4,451,028 is the same as last year, with $4,54,028 for general operating. However, last year, $147,000 was dedicated to the street program, and $250 for the repayment of the PIR fund. For 2016, the entire $397,000, which is made up of the $250 and the $147,000, is proposed to be dedicated to the street program. Other revenues discussed included an anticipated increase in local government aid, and expenditures included the addition of the human resources position and downtown neighborhood coordinator position. Other changes in 2016 include, one, revisiting the CenterPoint Energy Franchise Ordinance, two, reclassifying the central stores fund to the general fund, and three, dedicating the additional $250,000 for payment management. Mayor Calvin noted that he sees as top priorities for the city of Wilmer, one, to maintain operations at the city at the current level, two, pavement management, three, parks plan, four, facilities management plan, five, stormwater, six, establish a new local option sales tax program, seven, continue with the additional $250,000 portion of the levy to be applied to the pavement management program, eight, spend on the remaining library fund balance, nine, establish the two new staff positions of human resources under the finance department, and downtown neighborhood coordinator under the planning and development services, ten, to promote job local options, and eleven, propose three-year agreements for both Rice Hospital and Wilmer Municipal Utilities intergovernmental transfer agreements. Finance Director Okens indicated the finance committee meetings with full council have been scheduled for September 14th to discuss capital improvements and vehicle replacement, and for October 12th for departmental staff to present their operating budgets. Councilmember Christensen felt the city should hold off on the two new positions until the new city administrator is hired, because he or she may have different ideas. He also questioned the $710,000 for improvements under the park plan, as he felt those funds would be needed more for improvements under the pavement management plan. Councilmember Johnson expressed concern about instituting franchise fees, since there have been substantial increases in other utility charges which already burden our citizens. I expressed concern about terminating the library fund and raised questions about it originally being established for library improvements only. Councilmember Fagerly questioned the downtown neighborhood coordinator position, since the city already contracts with the downtown development to do similar work. The new position would be in addition to the downtown development. Councilmember Nelson asked why Mayor Calvin did not fund the $5,000 for Vision 2040. It was explained that various forms, such as Form 990, as well as a budget, need to be received from the requesting community organization in order to include it in the proposed budget. None of those forms were received from Vision 2040. I asked if staff was seeking grants and other leveraging options to offset the $710,000 for parks. Staff assured the committee that that was being done. Councilmember Aman questioned why a slash park was being proposed for Rice Park, one area residents don't want one. Further funds would be better spent on improvements under the facilities management plan, including the aquatic center. Mayor Calvin challenged the council to set priorities to pursue, and said that although he is aware of councilmembers' concerns, he would like to have a retreat to establish these priorities. Councilmember Christensen expressed concerns about the value of a retreat. Councilmember Aman stated his first priority is building maintenance. Councilmember Nelson stated the council needs to hear what the community feels are priorities, and not just what the council thinks are priorities. That, in about a million words, is a summary of the budget. So that was for information only, but we do have to take an action tonight, and it's not on the agenda, but we have to set the preliminary levy. And I would introduce a resolution establishing the preliminary levy at $4,451,028. And that's made up of $4,54,028 general fund, and $397,000 in pavement management.
Second. Motion's are made and seconded to establish the levy for 2016. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That levy can be lowered, but it cannot be raised.
Correct.
Once passed tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, then, we had a donation to the dog park. Staff reported that Wilmer Lakes Area Vision 2040 and United Way is providing a grant or donation of $2,000 to be used for amenities for the dog park. The grant was solicited by KC Dog on behalf of the city of Wilmer. These funds will be used for signage, waste pickup dispensers, and benches to be placed in the park. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to accept the grant slash donation of $2,000 from the Wilmer Lakes Area Vision 2040 slash United Way to be used for the dog park amenities and direct staff to issue a letter of appreciation.
Second. Motion made and seconded to accept the donation of $2,000 from Vision 2040 for dog park use. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Anderson.
The next item was the Selvig Park renovation. Staff explained that Selvig Park Committee has solicited a quote from Stacy's Nursery to renovate the landscaping at Selvig Park in two phases. Phase one totaled $17,210.80, and that includes demolition of the old timber landscaping and replacing it with block landscaping. Phase two of the project would not be done until spring of 2016, and is estimated at The city has a trust fund donated by Clara Selvig for the purpose of maintaining Selvig Park. Requirements for this fund establish that a balance cannot go below $30,000. Given the current balance in the fund, $8,000 would be available for the park project. Mayor Yanisch had requested assistance from downtown merchants to rejuvenate Selvig Park, and fundraising is in the works. It was noted that Faith at Work may also be interested in contributing to the project. Once funding is secured, work can begin. Following discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution to authorize Stacy's Nursery to renovate Selvig Park as presented in phase one for $17,210.80, and phase two for $7,288.94, with the work to begin only after funding is in place.
Second. Motion made and seconded to accept, or to authorize Stacy's Nursery to renovate Selvig Park as presented in phase one and phase two. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any idea when funding will be in place?
Kevin, do we know that answer?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, the parties that are working Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, the parties that are working hard on it have solicited $5,515 to date, plus $8,000, we're at 13.5, and there's some opportunities that are coming in. We believe that the Faith at Work has guaranteed all the labor that we talked about for saving a large parcel of that, but that is still $4,000 short at this point, and there's no other updates that I know of. It comes in and we get the checks when Mr. Amberger brings them to the office. So there's no action going to be taken till that gap is closed.
I know Eagle Scouts are eager to get new projects like this, so that might be something to consider also, even if it's just helping do it, but they do projects, they have to do them before they get their Eagle Award, and maybe you could check with the troops or the churches that have them and see if somebody might be interested in that.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification with the time where we're at, and I guess maybe a concern. I know they're working hard on it, and I think it's a good project. If we get late enough, does it make sense to do phase one this fall and phase two next year, or would it make more sense to wait until the money was raised to do both phases before we tear it apart and don't have anything back in place?
Yes. May I answer?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, the intent is to only do phase one this fall, and I was going to jump in and ask that we actually strike out phase two in the resolution because it was not going to come this year under any circumstances. Phase one includes filling the new areas with dirt, and they want it to settle and so forth through next year. And even that cost might be a year outdated when we finally figure out the flowering We all know we're fighting winter that's approaching, and if we don't get the $17,000 probably within a month, that gap doesn't close, we won't award anything to Stacy's, and we might be off their schedule. So it's a tough answer, but clearly phase one is all that's going to be attempted this fall.
Councilmember Nelson.
I got that part, but what if they do phase one and stop raising money? What are we going to do?
Ask for volunteer plans to be taken in. I don't know. I mean, we don't want to leave dirt there, no doubt, with all those areas where flowers could go in. If they expend all their energy trying to close the gap of the $4,000 we're short, that might be a reality. They don't have any other sources for next year, but we need the stonework done and the concrete work done and the demolition done before we think about putting plants in there, so.
Mayor Kelvin.
Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, an email came out today that Faith at Work Crew has worked with Public Works staff, and they're setting up October 15th as a workday to get this started. I believe that at that same timeframe, Faith at Work is also working on some funding mechanisms to help assist with phase one, and as Kevin explained, phase two is just the plantings. That was a quote that you saw that you're going to end up taking off the motion, and they're going to go forward with phase one, knowing that they've got some goals to reach for phase two in the spring. So that's the latest from the people working on it.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, the motion, the resolution I just introduced has both phase one and phase two in it, and to be honest, I'm just not understanding why we're not encumbering anything. I mean, we're not putting any city money in this. Why would we not just leave it all in there? If that's a question to...
Kevin.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, I just don't want any documentation here that would send a signal to Stacy's that we are granting that dollar amount at this point for next year's undetermined plantings and a different year of costs also for them. There's just absolutely no way that money's going to be reached at this point, and so that can come along at a later date. I just, you know, at this point, we are authorizing Stacy's Nursery to renovate Selvig Park, so we're not going to find any other vendor. We must enter the agreement because it's our park, and the city must take control of the contract with that vendor, so it would be clear to just have phase one for the $17,210.
Mayor Kelvin.
Councilmember Nelson.
The bid clearly states that the plants are phase two, spring of 2016, so you don't think they're going to honor that bid?
I'm less comfortable that we're going to find funding for that part, and I just don't want it to assume that there's a commitment from the city to Stacy's. That's the part I'm trying to avoid. If Stacy's want to honor that next year, that would be okay if funding ever came. I don't want to bind the city to that.
Councilmember Plowman.
This is a question for the attorney, Scott. Is passing this motion now for phase one and phase two, is this what would be considered a legally binding contract with Stacy's for both phases?
Attorney Scott.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Plowman, I think the wording of the motion's a little ambiguous. I think you could, and I think this is where Kevin's coming from, I think you could read it as the city authorizing the work and only, the only qualification being when the first date of work would be. So essentially granting Stacy's the contract to do the job, just saying that they can't start work until the funds are raised. So I think the city administrator's concern is that if you just simply remove phase two, then there's no argument that we have authorized the contract going forward.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I guess that brings back the first concern of tearing it apart and not committing to putting it back together, so, I mean, I'm supportive of the project, and I think Selvig Park is something critical. I'd hate to see it not be finished, and so I'm uncomfortable with leaving it that way. I think the city should be committed to finishing it, so, one way or another, and if, it's pretty ambiguous.
Okay, so what we've got is we have a recommendation from the interim city administrator to remove the second phase, so we would need that included on the motioner and the second to remove that. Or would we have to pull the motion?
I was just going to say that. I'm fine with that, striking the phase two for 728894.
Okay, so the motioner is okay with that, and the second is as well. No additional discussion. I mean, I don't want us to give the impression of a lot of volunteers that are putting tons of hours into this, that we don't have faith in what they're going to do. I mean, these are citizens in our community that have done a good job, and we didn't do the work, so they said we wanted it fixed up. They're coming with volunteer money, volunteer help, so when you have volunteers and you question it, you have to be careful, I think.
Councilmember Nelson.
I certainly didn't mean to imply that, but I think this group has been operating under the request of the previous mayor, so I think there is, there was a request from the city for volunteers to do this, so I guess my concern is finding a way to complete the project and help them, and I'm just curious with the process, so.
Yeah, and I have been down and met with Tom on two separate occasions, told him I fully support the project, and, you know, I think he's doing a great job down there. And, I mean, I know that, I know that you're not questioning, but dealing with volunteers versus dealing with paid staff, it's a lot tender, a lot more tender of an issue, so.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't think that any of us want to insult or second-guess the group that's working on this. We have full faith and confidence that they're going to get it done. My only reason for agreeing with what the city administrator had proposed was that the city attorney also felt that that would be the proper way to handle this. You know, I believe it's going to happen, and I think, you know, and it'll be a wonderful, wonderful addition to the downtown, so that was my only reason for doing it. It certainly has nothing to do with my lack of confidence in the group that's working on this.
Okay, any new discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Is it possible if we go back to the group and they feel that the estimate will be in jeopardy, that they could come back and ask us for that second motion if they need it to protect the price for next year?
Mr. Ellery, can we take care of that? It's outside of the motion, but...
I can, I understand that. You can ask them.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item was a consideration of the Willmar Rifle and Pistol Club Agreement. Staff presented the proposed shooting range monitoring services agreement with the Willmar Rifle and Pistol Club for committee review and approval. There have been numerous discussions with the club to arrive at this agreement. It was noted that training and certification costs for the range safety officers will be provided by the club through 2016, and then beginning in 2017, these costs will be the city's responsibility. City Attorney Robert Scott raised concerns with the decades-old practice of allowing the club the full use of the vault for storage of their guns. With League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust review of that concern, clause 11.5 was amended noting that the club will be fully responsible for the contents, and no city insurance will be placed under the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust policies to cover theft, water damage, and so forth. League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust's review of the arrangement does require clause 1.7, which refers to the city being named as an additional insured under the club insurance coverage. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and interim city administrator to execute the shooting range monitoring services agreement with the Willmar Rifle and Pistol Club as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Discussion.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just one question. I overheard a conversation after the committee meeting about questioning that we're only going to get a report annually, and I was just thinking about how the budgeting process will work next year if we only have information through January 31st, and wondering if that's something that we could request to be done more often, and if we're going to have to take on the costs for the range, forgot the right term, sorry, range monitors in the next year, we will have to build that cost into the budget, so I'm just curious about that.
Steve Brizendine, our Indiana Rec Director.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council, Councilman Nelson, we can request from the club to assist us in getting an informational document put together that would explain the majority of their season, which will start in October, November, and run through March, April of next year in time for the budgeting cycle of June of 2016, so we'll work on their half year of service and have information available for the budgeting process.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Anderson.
Item number seven was consideration of amending the assessment role for the 2015 Streets and other improvements. Staff explained that the council had previously adopted the assessment role for the 2015 Street and other improvements. Since then, assessments for the historic 313 Building have been finalized totaling Consequently, council approval is needed to amend the assessment role for the 2015 Street and other improvements for a new total of $444,139.34, which would include the historic 313 Building assessments. This would reset the start date of interest to September 9th, 2015, which is the date of closing with the five local banks. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution approving the assessment role for the 2015 Street and other improvements as amended totaling $444,139.34.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Steve, is it four banks or five banks that are involved in this?
Mr. Mayor, there are only four banks this year. One bank had met their limits with additional financing they'd done for Rice Hospital, so they had to withdraw for this year.
Okay, so do we have, it has to reflect the four banks, not the five, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item was consideration of agricultural land exemption of special assessments. Staff explained to us that it is city policy to temporarily exempt from assessments certain lands currently used for agricultural purposes. Each year, contact is made with listed landowners to ascertain their desire to place the land in agricultural use for the next crop year, which in this case is for 2016, totaling $654,059.06 in deferred collections. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I'll introduce a resolution approving the exemptions for qualifying agricultural land owners of special assessments as presented for 2016 in the amount of $654,059,006.06.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded for the egg exemptions special assessments discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question would be for Bruce Peterson. Regarding the city's policy for verifying the current usage of this land, can you maybe explain the process that's used to verify that they all, all the parcels are in fact used for agricultural use within a particular season?
Mayor Kelvin, Councilmember Plowman, members of the council, the process is pretty simple. It's a visual, and the people come in and sign their request for the assessment abatement or not abatement, but the deferral, and staff typically would just do a drive-by of the site to make sure it still needs for agricultural purposes.
Okay, so it is validated by at least one staff person during the growing season?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Aman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Councilmember Anderson.
The next item was allocating funds from Verizon Tower Projects to the fire department budget. Staff explained to us that Verizon and the city of Willmar have entered into an agreement through which Verizon will be renting land from the city of Willmar at the fire station to build a new cell tower. The phone, or the agreement states that Verizon will remit $15,000 annually for land usage and a one-time fee of $7,381.36 for new communications equipment to be placed on the tower. It's being proposed that the $15,000 be used to replace four overhead garage doors, add a restroom in the training room area, and remodel two other restrooms. The overhead doors were originally installed about 33 years ago and have outlived their useful life. They're falling apart and cannot be fixed. The fire department training room is used on an average of two to three times per week and has outgrown the one restroom concept. The original restroom in the training room area will be used as a female locker and shower area. Currently, we do not have an area for our female firefighters to use as a shower. The restroom shower area in the male locker room is in need of repair with the tiles coming off the floor and the sink contoured fixtures being very old and inefficient. of $15,000 and equipment expenses for the new cell tower of $7,381.36 to the Fire Department Budget, uh, for building maintenance projects and the purchase, the replacement communications equipment that will be placed on the Verizon Tower.
Second. Mr. Mayor, being seconded, Councilmember Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I believe staff was going to get back to us on how the taxes, the real estate taxes was going to be handled for that little piece of property that, uh, we're renting out.
Mr. Halliday, do we have an answer on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, we do not have information at this time of the, what the cost of that tower, but there clearly will be taxes on a public entity renting out, uh, the tower. So, we do not have an answer what that would end up being tax-wise.
But it will be the city's responsibility.
It is clearly not in the lease for the Verizon to pay the tax. That's correct.
So, do we have any idea like what Bennett is paying for their tower? Did we look into any of that? Did we do any research at all on it?
No, sir. We have, at this moment, a contracted part-time, uh, city assessor. So, it'll take us a while to get some answers with his other workload. But we should be able to get an answer to the annual, very close to the annual tax.
Okay. Councilmember Christiansen and Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, what we're doing here, what the, and the motion is saying that, uh, every year this $15,000 is going to go toward maintenance at the Fire Department. Is that present?
No.
No, sir. We do not anticipate that.
What it says is that $15,000 is going to go for the expenditures that are listed, which are bid over $16,000, and that they're going to reimburse the expenses of $7,381.36 off of the monies that they paid to us.
So, then the following years, that's going to go into the general fund, this money? The annual $15,000?
Plus that 3% that was listed.
Plus the 3%, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. I, I guess I was reading the motion, uh, differently here, saying the, the annual rent of $15,000 in equipment expenses for the new cellphone tower to the Fire Department for building maintenance projects. So, I mean...
Okay. The annual rent may be deceptive there.
Okay.
This year's annual rent.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification. I, when I was at the fire station, there's more than four doors. So, which doors are we replacing? Which ones are we not? The one on the backside and four on the front? Am I right?
You're correct.
Mayor Kelvin, Councilmember Nelson. The doors that we're going to be replacing are the, there's four of them on the front side of the building, um, towards the south. They are the oldest one, the oldest four doors.
Okay. And not the east side?
That's correct. Not the east side, no.
Additional discussion?
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Anderson.
Enough from the Finance Committee. Uh, unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
Councilmember Christiansen.
I was going to say, I would second that.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Discussion. Although in favor, signify by the same eye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion does carry. Public Works Safety, Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on, uh, Tuesday, September 1st, 4:45 at City Hall. Um, there was no public comments, so we went on to item number three, which is the police and fire updates. This is for information only. Our chief, Mr. Felton, noted that the census for that day was 162. 95 are from the Department of Corrections, 66 from Canoe High County, and one from Swift County. Uh, calls for service for the previous two weeks were 912. Majority of those calls were traffic stops, public assists, and suspicious activity. Total calls for service so far this year by the police department is about 16 days ahead of 2014 at this same date. Um, Chief Felton presented new brochures to the committee that have been distributed but, that are detailing outreach topics for the downtown business district on state laws, city ordinances, and guidelines. The brochures are also available in Somali and Spanish translations, uh, translations. Our committee discussed the police activity level of the downtown business district versus other city areas of the city, with it actually being relatively quiet and the police trying to break the stigma of people perceiving it as an area of high crime. Um, I don't know if we have any of those brochures with Jim. Did you happen to bring one or, um...
I do not, sir.
Okay. Very good brochures. I left mine in my car. I forgot it. But, uh, they're distributed by whom again?
Uh...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the brochures that you're referring to are, um, electronically with your council packets here, but we've had our community outreach sergeant distribute those. Uh, different officers have distributed them, but our police explorers did a, a large distribution downtown, uh, with the business owners and, and different people to better explain the laws and ordinances.
Okay. Thank you. Basically, the, uh, brochures are, uh, discussing in several languages the parking regulations and speeding and stop signs and et cetera, so that, uh, that activity doesn't take place downtown. Thank you, Jim.
Councilmember Christiansen, I've been downtown to some of the businesses and they are, uh, being distributed downtown by the local businesses as well, so...
Good. Good. I thought maybe Realtors would be a good idea to hand them out. Um, next is our, uh, Fire Chief, Mr. Frank Hanson. He, he gave his report and noted that the total of calls for service for the previous two weeks were nine and included several fire calls, vehicle accidents, a car fire, and a natural gas leak. The total calls for service for the Fire Department this year is 233, which is 23 above last year at this same time. Um, five new firefighters will be notified this week of their acceptance into the department. Another six will be hired in December. Uh, we should be bringing the total up to about 40 firefighters in, in the, where we want to be. Uh, our committee also discussed the availability of the FEMA website for the, uh, NIMS training courses, uh, that we, the council, are to complete. And, uh, pictures for new ID cards are taking place on Thursday. It took place Thursday, September 3rd. That item was for information only, as is the next one, item number four. Uh, we got a report on playground equipment. Uh, our staff brought to the committee for information only a playground inspection report, which was compiled by the Public Works Department's Certified Playground Safety Inspector, Mr. Justin DeLu. Uh, the report detailed inspection of the 230 individual pieces of playground equipment in the city's 28 parks that contain them. Uh, each piece of equipment had a priority rating of one through five, with one indicating a potential life-threatening issue and recommendations to remove, remove it immediately. And the item, or number five, would be signifying no issues with that, uh, piece of equipment. Each rating is given through a combination of the inspector's opinion and the use of a National Recreation and Park Association testing kit. Uh, our committee discussed the priority rating one pieces of equipment and weighed the options of either removing them or fixing them to make them compliant.
I have a note here, um, that, uh, motion to remove the number one equipment?
That is not in my...
We have the report tonight from Justin.
Okay. Okay.
Let's start with.
So, you want us to go to that report now? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. I would like to.
Okay. Is that where you were headed? I thought you were going to the next item on the agenda.
I was going to, but I'm glad you interrupted me. See, just Justin sitting there looking at me.
Okay. Justin, if you go ahead and give your report, we'd appreciate it.
We asked Justin to, uh, come and give us the report that, uh, he gave at our committee meeting. And, uh, thank you.
Yep. Um, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, like Councilmember Christiansen said, um, I inspected all the city playgrounds over the summer and made a report of them back in March. Rob Baumgarten through Community Ed and Rec, along with myself, went to a Certified Playground Safety Inspector class put on by the National Park and Recreation Association. And using that knowledge we gained there, we, we did this inspection and we did each park individually. We have a date and an address to the park. Each piece of equipment has a single rating. Um, it also has if there's enough, uh, surfacing material, which is sand in our case, and then comments as to why it, it, uh, rated as it did. Um, like Councilmember Christiansen said, it, it got a rating of one through five, one being the, the severest, you know, most potential for severe injuries. Two, um, was a temporary disability. Three was minor injury. Four, uh, the potential for injury is very minimal. And five was, um, no issues. Uh, to get that rating, I brought my kit here that we, we received from the National Park and Recreation Association. I'll just go over it real quickly. Um, we use these gauges here, um, to test for any protrusions on our equipment, anything that sticks out from a bolt, a handle, a footrest. Um, we slide these gauges over the end of it, and I'll just use my pen here. If it, if it sticks out beyond the end of this gauge, then it's considered a protrusion and therefore a hazard. Um, the next one that I use the most is, is kind of a combination gauge of a head probe right here and a torso probe right here. And this represents the torso of a two-year-old child in the fifth percentile, so a very small two-year-old. And the head probe is of a 12-year-old in the 95th percentile, so a large, uh, 12-year-old child. Basically, if you have any kind of opening on your equipment, a rung between, on a ladder, uh, spindles, anything, you have to start with this torso probe. And if it, if you can put it against there and it, it does not pass all the way through, then you're fine, because theoretically there will be no bodies passing through that opening. If it does go through that opening, you have to follow it with the head probe. And the theory behind that is if you have your body going through that opening, your head should also fit through that opening. If you got the body going through and the head does not, that's where you get an entrapment issue, you know, especially for younger children that are maybe, you know, a little less proportional and have, have, you know, the small bodies and the large head. This next gauge is similar. If you can picture head, neck, shoulders, this is for testing, um, three-sided, um, open, not even openings, but, um, like a U shape. And we have some examples on the, on the slide that I'll get into. And, and that's what I use the majority of. These, these probes are what I used on the report. And I'll show you some examples here. This is in Voss Park. This is a spring animal. You can see we have it labeled, um, on the handles and the footrests as protrusion hazards. You know, every, I'm sure everyone has seen these. These are probably the most prevalent piece of equipment we have. The height is around three feet, which, you know, could be the size of a, of many children using it. And if it's anything like my kids, they, they run first and they pay attention second. Um, so, you, you can see the potential hazard, you know, for, for an eye socket or, uh, the soft area of the skull, the temple. Um, and also this unit needs, definitely needs sand put around it. This is, uh, the, right next to that previous unit, this is at Voss again, similar. The, the handles are protrusion hazards and the footrests are as well. This is over at Mini Gasko Park. Um, the spring animals on the end are very similar to what you saw, but it's just on a different unit. This is what we call a buckabout unit. Protrusion handles, uh, protrusion hazards on the handles along with the footrests. This is an example of a compliant unit. This is over at Pleasant View Park. You can see how the, the ends of the handles are larger. Um, if, if, if a child runs into it, yes, they're, they're going to be bruised in black and blue, but you, you eliminate that, um, penetration hazard. Same on the footrests. You have an enclosed, enclosed circle down there. There's nothing, um, there's nothing where that, uh, you could, you could hurt your eye socket or anything like that. This is a different example. This is over at J.C. Park or Bria's Playground. Uh, similar setup. There's spheres on the end of the handles. So, again, someone hits it, yes, it'll hurt, but you take away that, that penetration hazard. This is an entrapment hazard. This is, this is where I would have used the, the yellow probes that you saw. Um, you can see all the circles on the top. The, the body probe fit through, but the head did not. So, you know, any, any misstep and you can have potential for injury. Same on the sides. You have a bunch of enclosed, uh, squares there that, they're closer to the ground, so they're not as high of a priority, but it still exists for an entrapment hazard. These are at Voss Park. These are Exerglide Swings. The backrests, you can see they're spaced apart. That is an entrapment hazard. The body probe passes through and the head probe does not. But again, you're, you theoretically, you could be close to the ground, so you might, you know, might just be stuck there. But up at the top, there is a crossbar going through there. So, if something happened up there and, and somebody was on it the way they're not supposed to and slipped and went through, you have a potential entrapment hazard. This is at Valley Side Park. This is an entrapment hazard. It's, it's got, um, quite a few of them. All those wooden spindles, they space out where the torso probe passes through, but the head does not. And if you can kind of see on the, the platform in the middle there, there's, there's two crossbar rungs. Those are again, um, entrapment hazards. This is at Sperry Park. This is a slide up at the top in the blue. You can see how it's spaced apart and it creates an entrapment and entanglement hazard. If, for some reason, a, a user slides off the side, their body will pass through, but their head will not. This is at Bursell Park. All those vertical, um, spindles or rungs are entanglement hazards. And I put this in there because I, I just wanted to show that it's not always the old wooden units that you see. There are some of our newer units that, um, that have these potentials here. This is at Bursell Park as well. This is a Jack and Jill unit. There are two arch climbers on the sides, um, and a staircase and a slide on the other sides. All of those, those spaces test out to be, um, entrapment and entanglement hazards. The body probe passes through, but the torso does not. It also is another hazard is created when the arch attaches above the platform. You have a tripping hazard. Um, they recommended that, that everything attach on a level surface. This is an example of a compliant unit. This is over at J.C. Park or Bria's Playground. All those spaces that you see there, either the body probe did not pass through, or if it did, the head probe passed through freely. That's a, a very nice unit. That was a, a very, um, that whole park is fantastic as far as, um, safety rating. That, that's a real, uh, hats off to everyone involved in that, the, the family and the city and the J.C. and everyone else who was involved. This was the same unit we saw before at Valley Side Park, just from a different angle. You can see the wooden spindles create entrapment and entanglement hazards. And up at the top is where I would have used this probe, where if you can picture a head and neck and shoulders sliding down at the top, there's no top rail up there. There are some of our newer units that have these potentials here. This is at Bursell Park as well. This is a Jack and Jill unit. There are two arch climbers on the sides and a staircase and a slide on the other sides. All of those spaces test out to be entrapment and entanglement hazards. The body probe passes through, but the torso does not. It also is another hazard is created when the arch attaches above the platform. You have a tripping hazard. They recommended that everything attach on a level surface. This is an example of a compliant unit. This is over at J.C. Park or Bria's Playground. All those spaces that you see there, either the body probe did not pass through, or if it did, the head probe passed through freely. That's a very nice unit. That was a very, that whole park is fantastic as far as safety rating. That's a real, hats off to everyone involved in that, the family and the city and the J.C. and everyone else who was involved. This was the same unit we saw before at Valley Side Park, just from a different angle. You can see the wooden spindles create entrapment and entanglement hazards. And up at the top is where I would have used this probe, where if you can picture a head and neck and shoulders sliding down at the top, there's no top rail up there. Or if a child has a hoodie or a lanyard or the strings from their sweatshirt, you know, could get caught on there, you could have potential for some injury. This is at Voss Park, very similar unit. Again, the body probe passes through all these openings. The head probe does not. This is a compliant unit. This is the smaller unit over at J.C. Park. This is for the two- to five-year-olds. All those vertical openings are small enough where the torso probe does not pass through. And even the different platforms, you can see that the gap between them is very small and nothing is going to get through there, maybe a hand or a foot, but nothing beyond that. This is a unit that was over at Gash Park. You can see in the center there, we have a little piece of wood that's different, a four-by-four. That was added on by staff after an incident we had over there a few years ago. The child to the left, it's not on the screen, I should have backed up a little more with the picture, but it's an arch climber leading up to a platform. Child was climbing up, tripped, misstepped, whatever it was, fell through this last opening here, and their body went through, but the head did not. Luckily, he was able to get his arm and his elbow up to prevent him from going down any further, and his brother was there to help him out, and I think the brother went and got Dad, too. So that was a staff repair there. We can see we took away that opening. You're not going to slip through there. So that is just kind of a brief overview. Kind of to summarize what we found in these units, I'll try and keep it as brief as I can. Like Councilmember Christensen said, there are 230 units that are in this park study. Forty-three or 19% of these are deemed Priority One hazards. Twenty-two or 9% are Priority Two hazards, so you're just under 30% as far as Priority One and Two, the major hazard. But if you want to look at a plus side, we have 50% of ours is either four or five, so there is some positive. I just wanted to share that with you, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Council, any questions for Justin? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great report. You did a nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, this equipment was bought, I know a lot of it is old, but when did the regulations change? These things were obviously compliant in the '70s or '80s when we bought them?
Mm-hmm. This current standard that they showed to us was last updated in 2011.
And that's what, everything that we buy now has to meet that?
Yes. I would imagine that anything manufactured now would have to meet that, yep.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes. This report was given to the Community Ed and Rec Advisory Board and also at the Public Works meeting, and I thought it was coming forward with staff recommendation. I know it was in the minutes from the Community Ed and Rec, but I'm just wondering if staff would like to comment on that. I thought that had kind of been agreed at Public Works, so.
Sean, are you going to report on that?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Nelson, I think what we got going on here is I provided for information only at the Public Works meeting, which is what Councilmember Christensen is reading. After the meeting, or during the meeting, rather, we decided to have a recommendation, a staff recommendation, at this council meeting in order to deal with the number ones on the report.
Okay, and so staff's recommendations on the number one is to?
I'm sorry, yeah, staff recommendation on the number ones is to actually remove all the number ones starting just as soon as possible.
Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson?
At the Community Ed and Rec meeting, maybe Mr. Brizendine would like to speak to that, because I believe the recommendation from there was to remove the number ones and to ask the staff to review the number twos and come back with recommendation, but I'd like to hear from Mr. Brizendine.
Mr. Brizendine?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council. Councilman Nelson, that is exactly what took place at the Community Ed and Rec meeting, and we discussed that at the Public Works meeting as well, and I do believe that Justin and staff were going to go revisit the number twos, as the priority for those is not as drastic as the number ones, and that work will be done as they're dismantling or taking out the number ones pending the action tonight by the council.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson, do you have anything else on that?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again, Justin, for your report. Very interesting to us and the public. We did discuss at the meeting that we would have a group discussion, or council discussion, and make the motion to pull all the number ones from the parks, but also included in that discussion was the neighbors thinking, "What are they doing? You know, we're losing our parks with all this equipment disappearing overnight. They're going to wonder what's happening." So we need to make the neighborhoods and the public aware through public television or handouts or brochures or something, or something sent to them, so they know what's going on, because most of the parks are used quite heavily. Now, there are some that are not. And we also discussed what parks, how can we come up with a list of parks that we should continue to use and ones that maybe we should phase out, so that we don't order new equipment for the parks that aren't being used very often? I know I've been called on the North Side Park several times, that it just doesn't get used. We have 28 parks in the city, and a lot of, I know, down in the metro area, they're going toward the one big park in the city, and they've got the baseball fields, there's a swimming pool, all the park equipment, huge, so that more people interact, and it's working well. So I will make the motion that we take out all the number-one items because of the health hazard they present.
Present.
Present, yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
I thought I heard it.
I did. Where did the second come from? I don't know where it came from. Okay. Motion made and seconded. Additional discussion, Councilmember Nelson and Ammon.
No.
Councilmember Nelson?
I would like to see the motion include directing staff to deal with the items that are listed as number two and to bring that information back to us. I'd offer an amendment to the motion to do that, because I think number twos are just as critical to be reviewed, so I'll make a motion, or to amend the motion, to include the items listed as number two to be reviewed and bring back.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to have staff bring back, do you want a timeframe on that or you just want it open-ended?
I would defer to Justin, I think, and they spoke about that at Community Ed and Rec. I don't know what the timeframe would be on that.
What would the timeframe be on bringing back the number-two recommendations?
That could probably be done by the next council meeting, given the proper time, or even the next Public Works, Public Safety.
We would want it to go to Public Works, Public Safety before it came here.
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
It started at Community Ed and Rec. I don't know, do we need to make the loop back there, or can we go directly to Public Works?
So the report has been given already to Community Ed and Rec, so could we bypass? Okay. So the recommendation then would be at the next Public Works meeting that you would have it on your agenda.
That's next Tuesday, by the way.
Given the proper time, I can do that.
Sure.
I think I just heard you had the proper time. Mr. Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, not only is the meeting next Tuesday, the agenda deadline is day after tomorrow, so I would suggest we kind of maybe push that off two more weeks?
Yeah, let's push it back two weeks, just to allow staff to have adequate time.
Got it.
Yeah, I forgot about that. Agendas are due at 1:00 tomorrow, correct? 11:00 to you, but what?
1:00 Thursday.
1:00 Thursday.
1:00 Thursday. I'm sorry. Additional discussion. Okay, do you understand the amendment? Okay, let's vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The amendment passes. Now back to the discussion on the original motion. Again, moving the motion forward. Councilmember Nelson, followed by Christensen?
I know we had this discussion at Public Works the other night, too, and I would encourage everyone, I guess, the council and the community, to take a look at the park plan that was just completed. That was over two years of work by a lot of people in this community. It does address the parks. It does address looking at green space. It does address some priorities for where things were planned. It addresses that parks aren't being used because there isn't equipment there, and so I would hope that we at the table would all review that document completely before we start asking for additional studies to be done and to ask the community also to prioritize their local parks and some of those kinds of things, too. So I think we've got a working document there. We just need to know what's in it and start to implement it.
Councilmember Christensen?
What are we going to do about the parks? Does the park plan address closing, which parks to close? I know that, reading the minutes of the?
Yeah, I think the motion, let's talk directly to the motion. The park plan is maybe not directly to the motion, so let's talk directly to the motion.
It was just being spoken about.
Correct, and that's why I'm saying I want to keep it to the motion.
Okay, that's fine.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The equipment you're going to be taking out, will you be selling that at the spring auction, then, the city auction?
It's illegal.
I'm guessing it has to be, yeah, it has to be destroyed.
No.
There you go.
It has to be destroyed?
Yeah.
Oh.
Mayor Calvin?
There's some good items in there. People would have put them in their backyard.
Yeah, I think there would be too much of a liability for that, right, Mr. Scott?
Just give a no comment.
Councilmember Nelson?
I did make this comment at Public Works also, and that I think the historical society should be contacted. I do believe there is some antique pieces that we are actually talking about. I have been out on the internet looking, and there are people who don't use them in parks but have them on display as antiques, so I would encourage just to take a look at if there is an opportunity, but to give a check with the historical society.
Let's get to the motion. I agree with what you're saying, but let's stay on the motion. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 The amendment and the motion both pass. Now comments about the antique park equipment would be appropriate and the park plan?
I was merely responding to whether there was an ability to sell them. I don't think there's an ability to sell them as equipment, but I do think there are some collector items in there.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Christensen, do you wish to speak to the park plan?
And the antiques. We've built homes for people that have horses from the old merry-go-rounds from like the 1900s. They're antiques, and they're probably illegal today, too. So maybe somebody's interested in them as an antique only and sold as an antique, but enough of that. As far as the park plan, I don't know how many pages it was. I remember looking at it, and when it was presented to us and we passed it, or accepted it by the city, but I don't recall any discussion in our closing parks. But I did read in the minutes of the Community Ed and Rec that it was brought up by a member of the Community Ed and Rec that we need to look at closing some parks, and maybe Mr. Brizendine can speak to that. I just read the minutes. I wasn't at the meeting.
Mr. Brizendine did signal to me that he does have a comment to make, so Mr. Brizendine?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council and Councilman Christensen, that has been a discussion that we've had throughout the park plan. When we have a system of 37 parks, that is a pretty big park system for a community this size. I think it's a great discussion item. I think at one of your last meetings, you started discussing the retreat and opportunities for us to discuss things. I think this is the type of thing that can be discussed at that type of session that we might have moving forward, or if we have some other open forums that you would like to do that at, whether it's the Community Ed and Rec board meetings or your Public Works or any of the other committees. I think it's a great discussion for us to have. We've had some internal with staff on what we should do with a system this large. I think there are some opportunities for us to potentially downsize some of our smaller parks, and there's also some opportunities to repurpose some of our parks. So I think it's a great discussion for you folks at that table and staff members to have at some session.
Thank you. Next item on your agenda?
That brings me to refurbishing with new equipment, some of these parks, the ones that are used mostly. I mean, is that going to happen soon? I know there was like $150,000 in the CIP for some of that equipment, and is that going to happen right away? When we take it out, or? We need to know which parks to put new equipment in.
Well, I think we've got a couple of different things going here. We're getting off the agenda, so let's get back.
It's a lot of us do, though.
Correct, I did, I did. I didn't think we were going this far down the road. So let's pull back in. I agree with Mr. Brizendine that this is an item for a retreat, and the original plan is we were going to have a half a day talking just to parks, but that was back in February. Now we're in August, so let's stay on the agenda.
Item number five had to do with Becker Avenue and Ninth Street Southwest intersection. This was for information only. We had a discussion on it. Staff brought to us for information, the response to concerns by neighbors of the intersection of Becker Avenue and Ninth Street Southwest. They thought that we had a need of traffic control, a traffic control device there. The history of crashes at that intersection was investigated with a total of five since 2011. Four were two-vehicle right-angle crashes from people claiming they didn't see the other car, and one crash where the vehicles left the scene before officers had arrived. Two had citations for driver's license violations, but none for excessive speed, and four of the crashes had no reported injuries. Only one accident listed the vehicles needing to be towed. With that accident history, good overall visibility and lower traffic counts, staff does not recommend a traffic control device such as a stop sign be placed at that intersection. Our committee questions if a yield sign might help alleviate the concerns, and staff stating yield signs typically train motorists to drive through traffic control devices. That was for information only. Item number six is a resolution. It has to do with the Country Club Drive Lift Station utility easement. Once again, staff brought to the committee for approval a utility easement for property owned by Wallace and Amanda Titus for the relocation of the Country Club Drive Lift Station. The amount of that would be $4,000. The easement was previously negotiated and agreed upon with the property owners, and construction will begin next spring. After some discussion, a motion is made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the utility easement for property owned by Wallace and Amanda Titus for the Country Club Drive Lift Station in the amount of $4,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the utility easement for properties owned by the Titus's Roll call?
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes.
Item number seven also had to do, also is a resolution, I should say, had to do with the backstop/fencing project at Swanson Field. Staff brought to us again for approval contracting with Andy's Fenceall for backstop fencing projects at the Swanson Field complex in the amount of $16,999.92. Our 2015 CIP allocated $30,000 for the replacement of the backstops at the Blue and Red Fields, repairing one post, adding a six-foot extension on the Orange Field, and replacing the security fence. Once again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve the contract with Andy's Fenceall for the backstop and fencing project at the Swanson Field complex in that amount of $16,999.92.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the contract with Andy's Fenceall discussion. Roll call?
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Christensen?
Item number eight was for information only. It had to do with Public Works' future staffing. Staff brought to us for information only the Public Works Department's future staffing of operators. On February 27th, there will be one retirement, and staff is unaware of any further retirements at this time. Each city employee will base their personal retirement decisions on multiple factors, including age, state benefit eligibility, and current job status. The current Public Works staff has done a tremendous job cross-training and preparing people for the inevitable. Our committee discussed the importance of cross-training in operators and providing procedures on various tasks for future employees. I had brought this item to the committee knowing that we face a lot of retirements in the next few years because we hired a slug of people in the '80s at the same time. That was for information only. Item number nine was also information only. Our committee requested staff examine Branch Three of Ditch 23A, which is over by Valley Golf, for
for overgrown vegetation. The recent concerns of Rice Park were discussed with the possibility of curfew enforcement after 10:00 p.m. The lights of the park and the tennis courts are on a timer, and they shut off at 10:00 p.m. However, the security lights and street lightings illuminate the basketball court and remain on all night. There being no more discussions to come for the committee, the meeting was adjourned, and if there are no questions or comments, I would move to file the minutes as stated.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to file the minutes for the discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a request that perhaps the two presentations or the document that Chief Phelps put together be put on the website and social media, and if there is the report on the playground equipment might be helpful for people to be able to see also.
Okay. I believe that the brochure was on Facebook last week, wasn't it? I believe I seen it on Facebook last week, so.
We can certainly make that available, and I can also get it to the city IT department to put on the city website.
Yeah, I thought it was on the police department website. I thought it was where I seen it. Okay, I'm sorry, the police department Facebook site. Okay. Most of them made and seconded to file the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm sorry, those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Councilmember Amen.
Labor Relations Committee met September 2nd. First, there are no people for public comments. Item number three was consideration of contract extension with the Anderson Law Firm. It's going to be a resolution. Staff was directed by the council in July to receive renewing the contract with Anderson Law Firm. Tom Anderson, the city's prosecuting attorney of Anderson Law Firm, was present to answer questions of the committee. Mr. Anderson addressed the committee stating that he has been prosecuting attorney for the city since 2012, and he stated things are going well, and he has had a good rapport with the police department. And since 2012, he has implemented additional technology in his practice, allowing him to have files available on laptop, on the laptop during court. A current cost-saving measure which saves overtime pay to off-duty officers with communication with the defense attorneys and the police department staff has been initiated. The interim city administrator, Kevin Halliday, informed the committee that they have the option of entering into a one-year or a three-year contract and pointed out a change in the contract from previous years as a $500 a year cost reimbursement. Following some discussion, a motion was made and seconded to approve a three-year contract with Anderson Law Firm as presented. I would move the recommendation of the committee that will enter this resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Resolution has been introduced and seconded to continue the contract with Anderson Law Firm. Discussion. Kevin, when you and I talked about this, you said that there was, if the city wanted to get out of the contract, we would be able to do that after the files that were open were closed without any additional penalties? Is that correct? I don't see that in this motion, in this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, during conversations with Tom Anderson, who was in attendance, clearly if we want to go a year and pull out, there will be no adverse cost to the city. We'd certainly have to take care of any cases there midstream, whether the new person that we bring, if we had an employee or any other contract, would deal with, or we'd continue with the Anderson Law Firm to close those cases out.
And then what is the total annual cost to this, to the citizens?
Well, it was $9,750 times 12 for the first year. I guess I don't have it annualized in front of me.
And then do we have the hourly rate on what is being charged for that?
I don't have that in front of me. Mr. Mayor, it's all in our minutes here.
Right, but it's not in the resolution.
2016, oh, $10,237.50 per year from January 2016 through December 31st, 2016, $125 an hour. That's the rate that's shown in the minutes or in the contract.
It's in the contract. It's all in the contract. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, the same terms apply. We were talking about a three-year contract. You set a one-year contract? So do the same terms apply for the three-year contract of termination?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to clarify, Mr. Amen read the monthly dollar amount for the one-year contract. That is higher than the three-year contract. The three-year contract for next year is $9,750 per month at the rate of $125 an hour. Anywhere along this 36-month period, the city of Wilmer can give notice that you want to exit this contract, and Mr. Anderson will abide by all those. We would just have to deal with open cases.
Correct. Okay. Resolution has been introduced and seconded. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Councilmember Amen.
Item number four was the Public Works position request. Mr. Halliday informed the committee that the three positions which were previously, before the committee, have now been reviewed and scored by the compensation study committee, and the pay grades were set. Public Works Director Sean Christensen addressed the committee stating that these positions take into account items that need to be addressed and/or duties staff is currently struggling to complete along with their normal work tasks. Mr. Christensen recapped each position, giving background information as to the position's previously existence, modification of promoting current staff when or creating as a new position. The position details of environmental specialists were presented by the wastewater treatment plant superintendent, Colleen Thompson. This is a new position with the city which staff is proposing to fund by not filling the safety coordinator assistant lab technician position vacated due to retirement. This position will coordinate environmental regulatory issues and maintain awareness of potential future environmental regulation changes that may affect operations within the city. This individual will facilitate regulatory and permitting efforts for stormwater and help facilitate MS4 requirements, along with providing support for regulatory environmental issues at the wastewater treatment facilities and make recommendations for environmental compliance. The committee discussed the funding for the position, realizing it can be funded by allocating unspent money from the vacancy of the safety coordinator assistant lab technician position. A motion was made and seconded to approve the environmental specialist position and job description and authorize the filling of the position after council ratification, and a motion was carried and seconded and passed. I will deal with these one at a time, Mr. Mayor. I will move the recommendation of the committee to approve that position.
Second.
Second. Most of them made and seconded to approve the position of environmental specialist. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I'm sorry, those opposed to that motion, same sign. The motion does pass. Councilmember Amen.
The second position of building maintenance supervisor was addressed by the Public Works Director, Sean Christensen, noting this would be the promotion of existing staff from pay grade three to pay grade six and filling the then vacant custodial position. This individual would organize the existing custodial staff and maintain the city buildings, relieving some coordination from the Public Works Director. Mr. Christensen stated these facilities are currently under review, and a facilities management plan is forthcoming, which this individual can use to ensure the maintenance projects are completed. This position was filled by a staff member in the past who later withdrew from the added studies, or added duties. Committee discussed and assessed the building maintenance supervisor position. Nothing there is, no immediate funding source to cover the additional costs, and so a motion was made and seconded to refer this position to the budgetary process for consideration, and I will move that recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to look for the funding through the budget process for the position of building maintenance supervisor. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just to clarify, we recommended it go through the budgeting process. It wasn't necessarily just find the funding. I think we got to look at our organizational chart and look at some things. So that was my understanding of the motion anyway, was that we didn't have funding and then we were referring it there to be reviewed. Am I wrong?
Councilmember Amen.
Well, my understanding is that we were going to try to deal with that in this year's budgetary process. That was my understanding of the discussion, that we were going to somehow find the funding to fill this position and refer it to the council and mayor for consideration.
Councilmember Anderson, I've seen your finger up. Did you want to talk to?
Yeah, maybe so. I pretty much agree. I don't know that we said necessarily that we were going to find the funding. I think what we really were saying was we're going to talk about the necessity of the position, and if it was determined that it was something that we found necessary, then we would look for the funding of it. Probably saying the same thing.
It's about saying the same thing.
Yeah, that was my understanding also.
We have to look for the money.
So basically, how I read it was incorrect. How the motion was read by Councilmember Amen was correct and seconded. Do you have that, Kevin? Could you read the motion back to me, because I think I may have messed it up? Because I basically said find the money and hire the person, and I don't think that was the intent from what I'm hearing now.
I believe the intent is to refer this position to the 2016 budgetary process for consideration. Simple as that. No concept that it's 100% passed and we're finding funding. It's just a consideration item in the 2016 budget. If there was some action to take, it wouldn't start till January 2016.
Councilmember Amen, you're the chair of that committee.
That was my understanding, that it was going to be-
I think I messed it up, sorry.
We're going to push it off on the finance committee and the mayor.
I think I messed it up, so.
And the whole council will make the recommendation.
Okay, as long as you guys know what you're voting on, okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Well, we had a discussion about, we're waiting for the building report to come back.
Correct, yep, yep.
And that we needed to take a look at how we were going to do that, and so I think this was part of that discussion of what the needs are for our buildings.
Okay, okay. The motion is to refer it to the 2016 budgeting process. All those, I'm sorry, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My recollection wasn't that we were going to send it to finance just to budget for 2016. It was as Dennis had stated.
That's what we're all agreeing, yeah.
But Kevin-
Yeah, I messed it up.
Okay, just so I'm understanding that correctly.
Yeah, the position's not approved. It's just to see if there's money for 2016. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the motion, same sign. Motion does carry. Councilmember Amen.
The assistant Public Works Director position was presented by Sean Christensen, noting the city continues to advertise for an assistant city engineer, and the last year and a half, only three applicants have been submitted. Mr. Christensen is proposing the promotion of the senior technician and filling an engineering technician position to return the department to its previous staffing level. He stated he saw no need to have two professional engineering licenses on staff for a community of this size. This was viewed as a short-term solution, and the staffing changes would have no negative effect on the budget. Motion was made and seconded to approve the assistant Public Works Director's job description and be filled by promotion and authorizing the filling of the engineering technician position after council ratification, and I will move the recommendation of the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to approve the assistant Public Works Director position to be filled by promotion and authorizing the filling of the engineering tech position after council ratification of this motion. Councilmember Nelson.
I am supportive of doing this, however, I am questioning the title that, the title that's on there and looking at our organizational study, where this person will fit underneath the Public Works Director. So I'm questioning if we're creating an assistant Public Works or if we're creating an assistant to the Public Works Director, because if you read the job description, it does not have, maybe fit the title. So, and I did have a conversation with Mr. Christensen regarding this, but supportive of what we're doing with it, just questioning the title and how it fits into our organizational chart.
Mr. Christensen, would you like to make a comment on that?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, if most of you will recall, this position started, the opening for this position started actually before I did. So as the assistant city engineer, my initial conversations with administration at the time and quite frankly, anyone who would listen, was that we didn't need the second license, as has been mentioned. We also stated that the position or the person proposed to fill that position is already fulfilling everything on that job description as the assistant city engineer. I am perfectly fine with, as I was initially with Colinant, the assistant city engineer, and quite frankly, maybe that does make more sense as far as the duties that that person currently covers.
I guess my question is then, what do you do about the license? And what's your recommendation?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't, I recommend we don't need a second license within the city of Wilmer.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson, then Nelson.
Councilmember Nelson brings up an interesting point, and the organizational structure, now I'm asking Mr. Christensen back there this question. On an organizational chart, who would report to this person or would anyone report to this position? And if you were gone, is this person in charge, or how does this work?
Sean?
Sure, Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, this person would currently supervise the engineering technicians that, well, like I mentioned before, currently is happening now as the senior technician position. So that portion of this position would not change. The, who this person reports to, which is me, would not change. The only change in this position would, actually, I can't think of a change in this position, this would allow us to fill the engineering department back to the four members. And if I can try to answer your question on who is in charge if I'm not there, I think that would be the same as it was before you hired me in that it would be either an interim situation or it would be this position for the engineering duties, and the departments would kind of take care of themselves in my absence.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Mayor Calvin.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson.
Just wondering if we can proceed with this and ask Mr. Christensen, Sean, to come back with a recommendation for an appropriate title and fit it into the organizational structure.
I have a problem if we're going to call it an engineer. I don't know that that would be a good choice of terms, because that is talking about a designation and a, so anyways, go ahead, Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I respectfully disagree. The engineer can be a title as well as a license. I know for a fact in the county situation, there is a title of an engineer that is not licensed as an engineer, and I would venture to guess there's a number of cities and counties in the state that have the same designation. I don't have a problem with it, with the exception of, like I said, I've proposed in the past to change the job description to not require, but maybe recommend or preferable a license. I think that would take care of the situation we're talking about. I think that would take care of the situation we're talking about. And quite frankly, I've been pushing this for a number of months, over a year now. I would like to move forward with it.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion, hold on a minute. Are you, I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson, are you suggesting that we amend the motion or are you just directing staff to come back to the next labor committee with a confirmation of the title?
I will do whichever is appropriate to have that action take place, so.
I believe we can just have staff review that and bring it back. I don't think we need a motion or an amendment. Everybody in agreement with that? Okay. Motion's on the table. Staff understands what the direction is, correct? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Councilmember Amen.
The only amendment in the minutes was I just reminded everyone of our notice we received for the Health and Human Services meeting or the HRA study on the housing study that's going to be presented, but currently that has been postponed, so we'll keep notice of that. If there's not any further questions, I'll move to file the minutes. Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you.
And Nelson.
I believe in the last time we had the labor minutes read, we were talking about how we were going to have the, the arena manager working and who that position was going to report to. I believe that the majority of the council felt it should report to the city, but that might require a change in our agreement with the, with the school district. And the city attorney was going to work on that. And I'm wondering if we have, have an answer on that.
Mr. Scott, you have an answer for us tonight?
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Anderson, I did look at the joint powers agreement. There's nothing in the joint powers agreement that requires that position to report to either the school district or community ed and rec. It seems to me, and again, I talked to the community ed and rec director about this issue, and it seems like this has just been arrangement by mutual understanding that it would report to the community ed and rec director. There does not seem to be anything in the joint powers agreement that would prevent the city council from directing it to report to public works. I guess I just offer the practical recommendation that if the council wishes to change the existing relationship at work through the joint powers board and in cooperation with the district.
Okay. That answers my question, and so I suspect that that would be an item for the labor committee to talk about because we have talked about it. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I just wanted to clarify, I believe that the HRA study is still scheduled for September 30th. It was the draft meeting that was, was, the date was changed. So just clarification of that, and maybe that can get put out so people are aware of the dates. I think that there was just a draft that was being reviewed and the public was being invited on September 30th.
Can you look into that, Mr. Halliday, and put it in the Friday memo?
Clarify.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to that motion, same sign. The motion does carry. Consideration of designating polling locations for Ward Four special election. Kevin.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in accordance with any election, we must adopt a resolution stating where the polling locations will be. They are the polling locations that have been adopted in the past. This is just, of course, a Ward Four, so we're only listing in a resolution Ward Four, First Precinct of First Baptist Church, Second Precinct Calvary Lutheran Church, Third Precinct Redeemer Lutheran Church. It is staff's recommendation that we adopt this resolution and have those locations published at the proper timeframe.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to publish the locations of the fourth ward election on November 10th. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Introduced an ordinance to rezone from R4 to R3. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, the city has received an application for rezoning from Kuzman Construction. They have purchased undeveloped properties in Terraplane Edition that was previously zoned or is currently zoned R4. They wish to construct single-family residential units on the property and have requested an R3 zoning designation. The planning commission held a public hearing and recommended that the council hold a hearing and adopt the ordinance to rezone the property. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be introduced for a public hearing on September 21st.
Moved to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the public hearing. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Next is council meeting dates. Finance.
Finance. Again, it's a budget issue. We're going to be meeting on September 14th, 4:45 here. This will be finance committee and the full council. We're going to be talking about the entire CIP and the vehicle replacements. And so when I talk about CIP, that's going to include things like the park plan and, and pavement management and everything that's on there. So I'm hopeful that everybody will have a chance to look at that and the vehicle replacement so that we can get that issue behind us. So anyway, here, September 14th, 4:45.
Okay. Next, Public Works, Public Safety.
Tuesday, September 15th, 4:45 at City Hall.
Labor.
16th, 4:45, City Hall.
And Community Development.
Thursday, the 17th, 4:45 at City Hall.
Okay. Also, if council, if you could put down on your calendar, October 19th at 5:00 PM in the council chambers, we'll be meeting with Gary Weers to talk about the next steps with the city administrative search process. The meeting will, is tentatively scheduled to start at 5:00, and a light lunch will be brought in. So between that meeting and the council meeting, we'll have a light lunch in the back room for the council members and staff that are in attendance. So get that on your calendar ahead of time so that we have that.
Repeat that date again.
October 19th. It'll be the second council meeting in October at 5:00 PM here. We may adjust the time as we get closer, finding out how much stuff we have on the agenda for that, but right now we're going to start it at 5:00 because if you're good for 5:00, you're probably good for a different time as well. Is that okay? Okay. The other thing that we talked about in, in finance was a council retreat, and I've asked our interim city administrator to get us a facilitator for that and also to get us a date. And so we'll be looking at getting that done as quickly as we can as well. We've been in contact with one individual, and we'll be moving on to a second individual. But are there dates that the, that we should stay away from for scheduling that? What we're looking at at this point is a one-day retreat, probably in the neighborhood of four to six hours, just to set some goal setting. And then we'll set that, and we'll have that meeting. And so we're not looking at a weekend, we're not looking at a two- or three-day event, we're looking at a one-day event, probably in the four- to six-hour range. So dates that we need to stay away from. Otherwise, Kevin will just schedule it and get it out in the Friday memo. Councilmember Nelson.
Do you want us to send dates where not available to Kevin, or how are you going to do that?
What I'm asking right now is if we know there's dates that you're not going to be available, we're probably looking in October at this point will be the earliest we'll be looking. We had some dates set out there, which was the second weekend in October, but I don't think those dates will probably work any longer. It's too close. So we'll be trying to get something to you as quickly as possible.
I know I have a couple of dates, but I don't have my calendar with right now.
Sure, send them to Kevin as long as he has them before the Friday memo, and he will have it on the Friday memo, the date of the retreat. Additional discussion? Okay. For the good of the order, moved to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.